All right, we will move on to our 2 PM, which was continued from September 10th, 2024, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending section 1.1. A of ordinance number 2945, increasing the charges and fees for county service area number two for Spring Valley lakes. And I do want to make sure, because I know there was, somebody approached the dais. You have paperwork, was that paperwork submitted? And just checking with county council, is it appropriate to submit that paperwork right now? I believe those are either yes or protest votes that you're holding in your hand?
Yes.
Okay, if you could please hand those in. And then Director Bore, I want to pass it on to you.
Good afternoon, board, staff, and community. I am Robin Bore with Special Districts. This item was continued from September 10th, and it's the Prop 218 process for Spring Valley water. And it was continued to allow the clerk to count protest votes that we had received and to validate them. So this item, it's moving, we're hearing a lot of moving from we have 12 consumer units included with our base rate to having four consumer units included in the base rate. And the reason we've landed on that is we worked with the advisory committee, and the majority of people in Spring Valley use less than four consumer units. So they were prepaying for water that they'd never used. And so that's why it's being reduced. And otherwise, the base rate would be much higher if we were providing 12 consumer units every other month versus the four. And so that's one clarification I wanted to make. Allison, with our consulting firm is on the line if we have any additional questions. And then this protest, we're, the hearing is still open. Once it's closed, and we hear from all of the public, and then we close it, then we may need a brief 10 or 15 minute break so that we can count the additional protests and validate them as they come in. But we can't validate everything until the hearing's closed.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I was, something about consuming units, four consumer, I didn't understand that.
Okay, so a consumer unit is 748 gallons of water per consumer unit. So when you figure out the price of how much water is, it's all based on how much each consumer unit is. And so there's a base rate just to have water, and then so much for each consumer unit that you use. So currently, the rates prepay for 12 consumer units. And so if we would have stayed with the additional eight consumer units, the base rate would have been much higher. I think Allison may have some slides that showed that. Do we have, wasn't there a price sheet that showed the consumer units? It was on the bigger thing. Allison, do you have that breakdown by chance? To show you the different, when we went to the advisory board, we had, you know, if we did four consumer units, if we did eight consumer units, if we did 12 consumer units, and what the base rates would be, so that you could see what the rates would change. And the advisory commission or board said they wanted to go forward with the four. And then anything above that, then you pay for so much per each consumer unit after that. So five through nine is $3.36 per consumer unit. Times, so if it's five, then it would be $16.15. If it's over nine consumer units, then it goes to $4.12 per consumer unit. So it depends on how much water they use and the price to produce that additional water.
Okay, I remember now it's on the slideshow, right? It's, it looks like this.
Yes, that's what, that's the summary. But we did, when we went to the advisory committee, had the different base rates with the different consumer units included, so they could see what those totals would be. But, you know, if it was 12, it would be over $100 as a base rate a month. So like $200, because it would increase by $32, $33 to just get to nine consumer units. But if we went to 12, it would be, you know, you'd have to factor that in. So it would be, the base rate wouldn't be basically $60 a month, which is $124 bimonthly. It would be more like $100 a month, or $200 bimonthly.
So there's a variation or something like that?
Well, because we, well, this is all based on the having four consumer units. And so we don't have the slides with us that show what the cost would be for 12. That's why I was asking if Allison had it.
Maybe she has it, that'd help, yeah.
Because then it would show, you know, why, because basically they're prepaying for water. Up to this amount is already included. You're prepaying for the four consumer units. But if you use four, traditionally, there's, you know, 50% of the population out there at least that use far less water than, say, 100 of the people that live out there. And so it's, is it really fair that the majority of the people are paying for more water than they're using? Or should we base the base rates on water that they're actually consuming?
Do you mind if I interrupt? I have a question. So I'm looking at 2.3 of the water rate study final. I thought I understood this better until I heard that the average is less than four. Because unless this is about like your standard water use in California, or standard water use, because it says typical utility bills, provides examples, bimonthly utility bills that also include the CIP charge. Over the six annual bimonthly billing periods, the average customer uses 13 CCF, of which 12 CCF is fully included at the base. Then it says in winter, the average use is nine CCF. Is that not based on Spring Valley? Because that's the way that I read it.
Well, the average is kind of skewed in that situation because we have basically 120 customers out there that are using 43% of the water. And so that we have some very high users. And then we have the, you know, if you took an average, you know, like listed them all out, most people use less than 50,000 gallons a year.
And the same thing was done when we-
So they just took an average? So, you know, the highs are pulling all the lows up?
Yeah, of course. If you have a million and then a couple of ones, it's still going to look like a really bad average. We did the same thing when we were reviewing other water districts, that outliers were taken out in order to get to that average, or no?
I don't know how they-
No, Spring Valley is different. The other water districts don't have these built-in consumer cubic feet. You know, when Spring Valley is kind of different, because in their current rate structure, they have to hit 12 cubic feet, and then plus one to actually get a different bill each month. Whereas most people see on their water bill, you get charged on your first consumer unit. So Spring Valley in that sense is unique to our other water systems.
So like the one that we did Kelseyville, it's 18 as the first tier, but you pay for each CCF?
Yes.
You don't get the first four, the first six, or the first 18 for free based off the base rate? And this is what you're saying is unique to Spring Valley? Okay.
Yeah.
And thank you for the response, because I was looking at that, that it's nine CCF during the winter and 21 CCF during the summer. And it confused me that you were providing a different average.
And that's what, I mean, we've done a pretty deep dive on this district when we started hearing complaints about changing that, and looked into all of them. And literally, there's 127 high users. Three of them were determined to have leaks. And so there may be some other previous ones that had leaks. So there's about 100 people using a significant amount of water, over 100,000 gallons a year. Which brings up the average for everybody else that, most of them use less than 50,000 gallons a year.
Okay.
And this was a recommendation from the advisory committee?
Correct. We took the three different scenarios to the advisory committee, and this is the one that they settled on.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll comment on that. I know that the meeting that was held was on July 10th. Usually, the meeting is on the first week of the month. However, it was 4th of July, so I know that some of them didn't go. I don't think they knew, a lot of them didn't see the bill until they seen the bill, then that's when they really understood the potential bill, or what it was going to look like, then that's when they came out. So I understand CSA wanted, or the advisory board wanted to look into this, but at the same time, there are some other variable factors that took place that I think is making the situation where it's at right now. So I just wanted to add that.
Just a brief question. The amount of usage of water, you were saying some are averaging 100,000 gallons, some of the high utilizers-
Over 100,000.
Over 100,000 gallons. That adds to the overall overhead cost of running the whole entire system, correct? And so as you're able to either crack down on the leaks or crack down on usage that is not what that water system should be utilized for, I won't go into potential details, that the overhead costs to that entire system could be reduced, and in the long run, maybe have an impact on what the future rates look like if we look at a reduction?
That is true. So right now, the system has to run almost all day, almost 24 hours to keep the water system fully operational. The second week I was here, the system was almost drained with water tenders pulling water out of the fire hydrants. So capacity is a huge issue, and so it requires all the equipment and, you know, additional chemicals and all of that stuff to be utilized for a longer period of time than what was probably ever intended for the system. And so we're looking at capacity and other items that are very expensive items that need to be done, as well as the wear and tear on all the equipment.
And obviously, you need these types of studies to increase. Do you need these types of studies to decrease? Let's say you see a huge drop in the usage. Obviously, treated water for leaks, what a waste. Treated water for things you're not supposed to use, the treated water for what a waste. So would it be possible, if there's a huge impact from resolving some of those issues, that you might be able to come back before the five years is over, if that was something that would be able to have an impact on the rates?
Yeah, so if we see that we have a huge surplus, we can always renegotiate, you know, go back and figure out what the rate should be and bring it back to the board. Us as staff can't arbitrarily change that, but we could definitely bring it back to the board. We don't need the full Prop 218 study to decrease rates just to increase them. You know, for instance, you know, if we got a $10 million grant for something, then obviously, that would majorly impact the five-year study. So it's possible.
I appreciate that response. I want to open it up for anybody to speak. Please make sure that you've submitted your paperwork, because it has to be a written protest. I know we've received some. Once public comment is over, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So please, this is your chance to be heard. Let's go ahead and open up public comment.
I have six copies, one for each of the supervisors and for the clerk of what I'm going to say. I can get it to 3 minutes and 13 seconds, so I might need a 15-second extension on my three minutes. My name is Helen Mitchum. I'm on the advisory board in Spring Valley. And the advisory board would unanimously call for the cessation of this current 218. To be clear, the advisory board wants to make sure that the board of supervisors understand we support a rate increase to accommodate increased costs. However, water rate, the water rate proposed by special districts and our consultants, in our opinion, is completely out of line. We also feel that these proposing these draconian measures, when they aren't warranted, would be a travesty. We ask you, the board of supervisors, to please strike down the current proposal and allow us to develop new water rates based upon an actual analysis of the figures, as opposed to just inserting numbers into a spreadsheet, without understanding our history and the reasons behind the numbers. Specifically, we're talking about looking at trends and history and asking questions as to why certain expenses are increasing, and others, considerations and trends are not even being considered. We want to get this right and have it be appropriate. We disagree with the assumptions of the proposal and do not want to pursue it any further. We need to start over by analyzing the recent expenses and revenue and considering all the hows and whys involved. Please give us the opportunity to get this right. I have attached with your package a copy of the ordinance number 2945 from 2011, which was our last Prop 218. This ordinance is the result of the last Prop 218. And as you can see, the format is really different, and there are a lot of other fees involved that we believe should have been addressed and included in this 218. Like a late charge, lockoff charges, shut off and turn on services, lockoffs due to non-payment, charge for the installation of a new or additional meter. The capital improvement fee is currently $19,217. This is a fee that Jan Kopinger, I think some of you might remember Jan, told us we might want to take a look at because it seemed like it might be illegal in that it is so high. We brought this up, but we're told it isn't actually involved in a 218. And even though the fee is charged to a user, a potential user, we wanted to check that out. Theoretically, we can and probably should raise many or all of the fees involved, since all the costs have gone up. It might be justified, and we could help, it could help us to mitigate the degree of the proposed increase. As you can see, there are a lot of concerns, and you've heard a lot of the other ones. But please consider these issues we have and void the current proposal.
Thank you for your comment.
My name's Ed Smith. I'm also on the CSA II Board, Chairman of Finance and Planning. When we were looking at raising our water rates, we, we needed some help. We don't get the reports. The reports aren't necessarily able to be used in a raw form in order to be used for such a water rate. We were expecting an outside source to look into special districts' accounting and how they were looking at the, the future. We didn't get that. What we got was special districts giving the outside source their numbers, which completely went away from everything we were looking at. At that time, it kind of got out of control. What we were looking for was some sort of way to get back up, have the, the revenue, take care of the expenses. What happened was, once the outside source put together the, the paperwork, and the, and the plan, and the options, they were stuck on certain numbers. And we disagreed with them. And we disagreed with multiple things. And we got pushback on everything. We, we wanted to be involved. Basically, we were told this is the way it's going to be, and that's tough. And we were given options. And the options did not include anything that we felt that was appropriate. However, we couldn't get any more options, and so we chose from what was available. In retrospect, we should have shut it down. What happened is we took what we, the best that we felt that was there, brought it back to the community, and the community resoundingly ripped it. They, they wanted, they had all sorts of questions about why the, how we can justify these increases. We weren't able to give them that information. We have numbers and budgets. What we, what we want is to raise the price, but we want to do it appropriately and to be something that our residents can afford. We have people in Spring Valley that are old. A lot of us are old. And a lot of the older people, they, they don't want to speak up, they, they're with their health and whatnot. And we weren't able to get a response of that, of the disagreement on, on this. We, as the board, represent our residents, and we fully want to represent them inasmuch as they want no part of this proposition 218. They want us to start over. We want to raise our prices. We want to do it appropriately. And so we ask you to abolish this. Give us a chance to get it right and make, make it work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come on up.
All right, well, I am here to just plead with you guys at this point. I came with my evidence last time. A lot of things that special district says is fabricated. It's not true. She stated that PG&E is responsible for all the broken lines out in Spring Valley that they're breaking right now. They're only responsible for the ones that are mapped out, and the ones that are not mapped out is special districts. So now that comes back onto the consumer. So we're going to be paying an arm and a leg for all these people to be out there fixing these water lines. And right here, if you want, is the email from Jesse that actually states that special districts is responsible for it. Another thing is, people can't live off of four CCFs. It's proven fact. Each person in the state of California is allowed to use 55 gallons a person a day. If you multiply that just by one person, they're going over the four CCFs. We're okay with the hike. Look at Kelseyville. I believe that's your district, Jessica. They went up to 114 every two months at the end of their five-year, and that includes their 18 CCFs. And their 18 CCFs is only $25 for that extra 18 CCFs. So right there, just in two months, it's $114. In two months, we're going to be paying close to $300 every two months. Some people with a family of four are going to be paying close to $500 every two months. We have, our roads are not taken care of. The superintendent out there stated that they're only given $3,000 a year to work on our roads. Where's the rest of our property taxes going? They say it's to maintain the bridges. The bridges are not maintained. They don't maintain our roads. They don't maintain our water system. But all we see is, as E.J. Crandall seen at our community meeting, people complaining about just the mismanagement. There is so much staffing going on out there, but nothing being done. And what a perfect place to go hide in the county is Spring Valley, one way in, one way out. Nobody can see what the employees are doing out there. There is no keeping track of what they're doing, or what they're using, or saying how many hours they're actually working. So just, I'm asking you as a board, please look into special districts a little bit more. I mean, she took her time to look into the water usage, but did she look into the time of where all this money has went and why there's a deficit just in three years? We've never had a deficit. Yes, our water rate came up in 2011 because it needed to. But we haven't had to have a hike rate because we haven't had any problems until the last two years, which I believe the advisory board showed me is only two years of a deficit out of all, from 2011 to now. So I'm just asking you guys to please just knock this down and let us go back to the board, and give us something that's more realistic for people that are trying to survive this economy, because we're already paying PG&E to put the, the lines underground. Our roads are crap. They don't want to repair them because special districts doesn't maintain them. Now that they're breaking the water lines, the consumer has to pay for the water lines. It's just, we're the only people that are paying. Anyway, thank you for your time. And if you guys want the emails where it states that, they're right here for you guys.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Johanna.
Hello, I'm Joe Wells. I've lived in Spring Valley for 36, 37 years. In that time, I saw quite a few people at special districts. And to be honest with you, they've always done a pretty good job, as far as I'm concerned, with what they can do. Before, there was only one guy out there. And if there was a leak, they called for help. But that was Rick Jones. After Rick retired, there was a fellow by the name of Steve. He went to work for Cal Fire up at Conota Camp. About six or seven years ago, they come up with these big old trucks. And to repair a water line, they have a high-pressure hose and a vacuum, and about four or five guys working there. So there's an increase in personnel. And, you know, reading in the paper about that guy at code enforcement, he's making $83,000 a year. What do these guys at special districts make? And how many of them really do we need out there? For the first 30 years I was there, there was one guy. And he wasn't there all the time. So this is a concern. One thing, if we're going to pay about $100 a month for water, that's half a million dollars a year. Where is that money going to be spent? What are they going to do with that money? This is things that you really should ask yourselves. You know, we all count on you to do the right thing for Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Please come on up.
I brought some of my flowers from the yard. My name's Mary Ann Meltzer, and I've lived in Spring Valley for several years. I brought my bills because last year, I've only used 833 gallons more than last year. And I received a high-water-usage-leak-detection letter in the mail this year. I have animals, I have a family, I have plants, and I've only used 833 gallons more than last year, and I don't have a leak. But I have to keep replacing my pressure-reducing valve because the pressure's so high, it breaks our pipes. That's, that's high. I've seen, my neighbors have had a lot of water leaks in the street from the, the trucks coming and going in the valley right now. Are so heavy, they're breaking the water lines in the street. The streets aren't maintained. I have to call constantly because there's potholes. And we have to keep replacing everything on our cars because the potholes haven't been fixed. They do try to fix them when I do call, but the road's gotten really bad with PG&E out there. So I, I don't know. I think this bill, for the last two months, for this year, it was $243. In just a couple of years from now, that's going to be over $500 for the same water usage. And I conserve as much as I can. So that was my point, is that I don't, I don't have a water leak, but I got a letter this year that I have high usage. That's all. Thank you, guys. And these are for you guys, for the water. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Rankis, again with the land of goats and honey. I have one of those special lots out in Spring Valley, which is a suburban reserve. I'm not part of the community, that's all the individual homes. I'm a special attachment to that community that the zoning laws provide for, to allow me to have high-density animals. I think last time I told you I was going to have two cows, donkeys, I've got ducks coming on the 7th, I have goats, I have a full garden. I'm allowed to have two ADUs. So if anything ever happens with my family, I'm allowed to put them on my property. Do I have to get another water main for that? Do I have to pay another capacity expansion fund of $29,000 again for that? That's not what I signed up for. That's not what it's zoned for. So I know that most people don't use a lot of the water, but you're supposed to take care of the people that do. The zoning is a commitment. The commitment is that I will do this on the property, and you will provide this for my property. And just because all of it's not zoned the same doesn't mean that I shouldn't get what I paid for and what is provided for our property. So I'm just asking that we fix this situation so that I can keep my property, keep my animals, keep everything that we planned on doing, the vision that we have for our property, and keep my property values up. Because if we have no water, and it costs a million dollars, nobody's going to want to build out there. Nobody's going to grow. You won't be able to sell anything soon. So please, protect our property. Protect my rights. Protect my zones.
Thank you for your comment. Please come on up.
Hi. Okay, so my name's Andrew Kirkendall, and I am responding on this high water usage leak detection that we received in the mail. Ironically, it was dated September 17, 2024. So I don't know if this is just part of like a special district's cover up to like, oh, this one's using this much, this one's using this much. But I'm trying to say, like, shouldn't you have a little bit of probable cause? Like, shouldn't you go into like, oh, last year's bill was really same, only 800 gallons, like, different? So, and I just, it's just really unfortunate that this is just wasted money, wasted time, instead of just diving into the evidence. A couple of years ago, back when the illegal marijuana grows were going on, special districts came out and harassed us because there was water tanks on our illegal growers, on the illegal growers' lot right next door to us. Without any investigation, they just specifically were like, we're going to turn your water off unless the tanks are removed. Without any investigation at all. And everybody knew the illegal marijuana grows were going on, but nothing can, like, you know, nothing was going on. And then back to where the water meters were on, how many lots have water? That's not fair to say, oh, well, the people that don't have a residence or a family are only using, you know, no water. Like, that doesn't, that's irrelevant. That's ridiculous. So apologizing for my emotional outbursts, but this is just ridiculous. Special districts needs to be investigated. Like, I don't know who's running it, but all I know is the Board of Supervisors manage special districts. So that's what...
Thank you for your comment. Do we have one more in the back? And if there's more, I'm not trying to limit. I just saw one person trying to get up.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Rankis. I live in Spring Valley. We moved there approximately three years ago. I'm not going to go over all the details. I think all the evidence there is in front of us. What I want to encourage us to look at is an awesome opportunity as a county, Board of Supervisors, and a community that could come together, develop a proper water rate structure that will benefit new growth in that area, specifically with the capacity expansion fee. I paid that $24,000 when we first moved there. Have no problem doing that at all. I'm investing in my community. I'm investing in where I live. I spend money where I live. I don't spend it outside the county. If the water rates continue to go up, we're not opposed to a water rate increase by any means at all. What we're opposed to is the rush, the numbers. Let's look at it. We have an opportunity to shine as a county. Let's do that. We don't have anything to lose by doing that. You guys already have a hard enough job as it is. Let's not make it any worse. People won't want to move there. They won't want to move out there. That's lost revenue in taxes, water rates, everything else. It takes money to make this magic happen. So let's really look at that. Let's take the opportunity, instead of just pushing it through and then coming back and saying, well, maybe we should have... No, let's just stop right here. Let's look at what's in front of us and proceed. Let's get everybody involved. That's what a community does. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please come on up.
My name is Cindy Storrs. I'm on the CSA Board. I have concern on your behalf. There are a lot of questions about numbers, about who received letters, about who didn't receive letters, about those categories. There are a lot of questions about what was right and what was done fairly. I understand that special districts had a sentence in their 218 paperwork that said, if you need this in Spanish, call the office if a significant population in Spring Valley that doesn't read English and didn't necessarily see that little thing. So a very important document was not translated into Spanish for our water users. My concern is that after working and spending $10,000 for consultants who told us again and again that part of their responsibility is to be able to present a water rate increase that keeps you out of the courts, that may not happen. I have concern about what could happen to you as a board if some of these things aren't clarified. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Again, my name is...
If you can be brief, since you've already spoken.
I will. One thing I forgot to bring up, was talking about the letters that went out to our customers to get to say yea or nay, or to reject, or complain, or... We were told that there were 1,000 letters that went out. How many letters went out?
499.
499. 499 letters went out, and I'm looking at how many water users there are. And according to this record right here, it says 409. 409 water customers. The difference is, I think, the standby. So if you're on standby and you get a letter saying that the water rate is going to go up and it doesn't affect you, what are you going to do? I'm going to throw that letter away because I have no standing, and that's my point. They don't have a standing. They shouldn't, their numbers should not be included in the number to set a threshold to get the votes against it. Now, we're still saying we want to just shut this down. I just wanted to make that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you for all of your comments. I do want to make a couple statements just because, yes, it's definitely emotional to having to deal with this. Some of you have questions about why you're seeing more people involved with an operation that before in the past you didn't see that many. I'm going to say state laws have changed. Even as simple as just flagging for any type of roadwork requires a minimum of folks to work for safety that did not used to be required before. And so you're going to see a whole lot more workers doing roadwork than you have in the I like to give benefit of the doubt to the staff that works for us. The fact is, this is similar to an enterprise fund. The money that goes to CSA number two stays in CSA number two. It could only be utilized for operations within CSA number two and those related, the working in CSA number two. And it's also a system that's getting older. And I think that's a situation that we're probably dealing with entirely across the county, is 70 years ago, the system was much easier to handle and deal with. The water was easier to handle and deal with. But with issues of changing the quality of the water that you're dealing with and so on, it just adds to the unfortunate cost that it is. Not saying I agree 100% with what's in front of us, but I'm saying that there have, you can't look at 30 years ago and equate to what should happen today. It is unfortunate, but it is the facts that we have to deal with, that we have to follow state law, we have to follow rules and regulation, we have to follow OSHA. And all of those things do end up adding on top of the overall overhead of what it is to own and run a water district. So I appreciate your comments, but I needed to at least make statements on that because I don't believe that staff is thumbing their nose at you. I think they don't want to hear the complaints. I think they want to make sure that you're getting potable water coming out of your faucet, and we're going to see what we can do. So I just wanted to make those statements. We do have protest votes that were submitted today. I want to make sure that we have had the chance, I believe we have had the chance to add it on to the protest votes that we've already received, or do we need a break? We don't need a break? So can you give us a number of protest votes received?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for the record, that in Zoom, that there were no speakers in Zoom.
I checked. There are no hands up in Zoom. Thank you for checking.
The amount received or the amount that were verified?
Say what?
Verified or validated or received?
I want to hear the number that were validated as far as, this is the number of valid protest votes that we received.
So I have 207 valid votes. I didn't count the nine that were received, so that would be 216.
If they were all validated?
If they were all valid.
And we heard two separate numbers. I kind of want to clarify from what you...
There's 499, so we would need 250 protests to be against it.
Okay. And can you speak to the difference between the 499 and 409 that was brought up?
It's the standby accounts that could turn on their water tomorrow. They have a valid water connection, and either they've turned their, they're on standby for some personal reason.
Okay.
But they have a valid stake in what the water costs because they are currently hooked up and could get water at any given minute.
Do they already have a hookup?
Correct.
They've just disabled the connection or disabled the ability to use it or whatever the case, the standby?
It's on standby.
Okay. So I want to bring it back to the board now. We don't need to have any time to count everything. Everything's been brought to us. I do want to kind of salute the community. It is not easy to get to 50%. I already mentioned that in our first go around, that that is an arduous climb to get that, and it is very close. Want to open it up for any comments?
Yeah, I still stand where I have stood. The, I don't feel that it's anyone's fault per se, but there has been, you know, change over. There were some things that I feel put the community in a position of a disadvantage when it comes to the Spanish line. I'm still confused about the 409 and the others. I understand they can hook up, but they're not hooked up. And, you know, I just, just for me, I would rather, you know, I heard loud and clear the advisory board say they would really like to come back. If they had the choice, they would have rather just nixed it then and talked about how they can do a better rate or something like that. So I'm kind of in that, that's where I would like to stand at. I would really like to see if there would be an opportunity to do that. I understand special districts is extremely busy and has numerous things to do. I just want to get it right for the community. I would rather do that than to, yeah, move forward.
So I do have a quick question. Can you provide me that number again? And I don't know if that was a approximate number, but the number of parcels that were way above and beyond 100,000 gallons or more?
I sent out 127 letters. Some of those were a handful of people that had a huge spike in the last billing cycle, so they went from like 10,000 gallons to 40,000 gallons, indicating a spike, and they had never hit that amount. But the majority of them, 120 of them or so, used over 100,000 gallons of water.
So I want to use that for a point I want to make. So that's approximately 20 to 25% of the entire parcel list, right? Because we said we're at 500, just to average it out to keep things simple. And so 100 would be 20%. And you said it was more than 100 that used 100,000. And I'm just curious as to, and I'm looking at the final study where it goes 0 to 4, 5 to 9, and 9 plus. And when I did 100,000 gallons in CCFs, that's 113 CCFs. And so...
Divide it by six, because there's six billing periods.
Oh, you're talking about on annual, okay.
That's an annual, that's an annual number. And it's...
Thank you for clarifying that.
And it was over the annual year of 100,000. It started, but there's some people that have used 300,000 gallons, one close to 400,000 gallons. So there are some really high ones as well.
So even then, divide that by six, that's 25 CCFs per month. Sorry. Yes, every billing cycle at least. And the fact that it stops at 9 plus, is it out of question to have a separate tier? Because it almost feels like there's more impact on the, I guess, lower end than upper end, because how much more does it cost to have somebody expend that much? And everyone is having to help pay for that expenditure of water being utilized, most likely if it's a leak for useless reasons, if it's for marijuana grows or other reasons that it's not meant to be used for, useless reasons. Is there a way to look at another tier category to help alleviate a little bit on the lower end for those who use it for really residential purposes? And have an extra tier to kind of alleviate, but still meet the needs of the system? Because I feel kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place where I need you guys to not go in the negatives and all of a sudden say, sorry, Spring Valley, but we just can't provide water, and now we're just going to slowly see this fall apart. But at the same time, is there another opportunity for separate tiers, lower the cost on those on the bottom tiers, and be able to help compensate in that way?
I don't know if Allison's on the line, but there's been litigation, and you're not allowed to have a high use penalty or a fine to, you know, charge people that use a lot of water. You can't charge them more to teach them to conserve water. It has to be 100% based on how much it costs to deliver that water. So that's why they've broke it out and done this, and it's all based on how much it costs to deliver the water.
I understand that. I don't think it's a penalty. I think it's a penalty on the general users who don't use that much water to have to increase the cost due to that high use. And I know Allison was on.
Yeah, Allison, do you want to explain how you came up with the different tiers and the base rates?
Yes. Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so that's a really key question in assigning tiers. There has been a lot of litigation around the cost basis and assignment of costs to higher users at higher, you know, tiers and the tier breakpoints. And so what we did was we looked at a base level of water use throughout the year and then identifying costs associated with peak usage, particularly during the summer, and what costs can we recover from that higher tier? And this was the methodology that was litigated. So peak usage has higher electricity, you know, moving the water at a high intense rate to those high usage customers, and then wear and tear on the water system. So all your infrastructure has to work extra hard to supply use at high capacity at peak times. So that was the difference between tier one, the lower cost tier, and tier two, the higher cost tier. So then we talk about, well, could we even do a tier on top of that? And I would say, I think it would be a real struggle to determine specific costs above that second tier that would fall into the third tier. What costs on top of peak usage would be some kind of super peak usage? What identifiable costs could we put in that tier that aren't already in tier two? And I don't think that we could identify specific costs for a higher tier that would meet, you know, legal standards.
And the only reason I ask is because 20 to 25% is pretty significant, and I don't know that a tier would be seen as identifying a small number of people versus a large amount of users that are increasing the overall cost of the system. That's why I bring it up. Supervisor Paeska.
So I understand this is difficult. And yes, Kelseyville water is less expensive, but that's not where I live. I live in Cobb, and like I said last time, that water is very, very expensive up there. So I do understand the pain. But I guess what I'm conflicted here about is, we've done this study, we understand how much it costs to run this system. What, you know, going back to the drawing board, has been suggested, like, what was missed here? Or what would be the benefit of doing that if we already understand what the cost of delivering water is? That's where I don't, and maybe Supervisor Crandall has an answer.
I don't have an answer for that. I have something totally different, but I...
Okay.
And I would agree with you. The study's been done. I don't think that there's a question of the study. That's why I'm offering, is there a way to add more tiers and things like that where it alters the outcome of the study, not the study itself? To try and find ways to rebalance and recalibrate so that those who are doing good with the amount of water that they use is going to not cost them as much as somebody who's using an enormous amount. Because, again, that taxes the system more, and so they should be paying more as it shows from using the higher levels of tiers.
And they will be paying more.
So I do have...
Vice Chair Crandall.
Have a question, because looking back, we were, we're going by the Prop 218. That's the deal. And in it, I'm reading it just from the California state where it says Prop 218. And it says, "Must notify ratepayers." It says, "Also, if more than half of the property is served..." So those are two words I want to focus on, ratepayers and served. We're talking about people that have the hookups or whatever you're talking, that one, the 90 people that have those, they're not being served right now. They're not ratepayers right now. So I mean, if we're going to be technical with Prop 218 and all these different aspects, I really feel we need to stick to this verbiage that says ratepayers and serviced. So that takes away 90, in my opinion, and puts them over the threshold to have a legitimate protest. But then again, I'm not an attorney. So, but that's just the way I'm reading it.
But they have service.
They're not being serviced, though.
But they, they have a service.
It says served, property's served. Even though they have service, they're not being served. That's my opinion. I don't know if that's illegal, legitimate.
Please.
I mean, that's, I understand what you're saying, but for me, if they have a service, then they've paid for that service. They, they're not using the water at the moment, but, but they would be affected by a change. So they do have an interest.
Okay. Well, they're not ratepayers.
They're not ratepayers.
Yeah. But I understand, I know...
They do pay a standby fee.
They pay a standby fee.
Correct.
Supervisor Green.
I hesitate to ask the question, because I don't think it's going to be helpful necessarily, but I'm going to ask it. So first off, for those in the audience, I do get the difficulty of this, the rates going up, but there's Prop 218 calls for proportionality. So if there are people that are using just a little weensy amount of water, and other water users are using a greater amount of water within that base structure, then those little weensy water users are essentially subsidizing those using more water. And I think we would all agree that's kind of unfair. So the question to me is, at least a question to me is, although the current rate structure gives you a 12 CCF, and the proposal is to go to 4 with the base amount? It is an interesting district, and, and this rate study does, by necessity, average flow rates and estimates based on land uses. So you have both a good chunk of rural residential land uses, but you do have larger SR parcels where there may be additional agricultural activities going on. So not asking to do it, but how hard is it to, say, recalibrate for a base rate of 6 CCF, which is basically half what the current base is? Would we still be unfairly subsidizing larger water users at that? And, but would it give some of the residential property owners some greater certainty that they're going to get the water they need, the base water they need? But my feeling is, if we go 6 CCF, that's going to raise the monthly amount, and if they don't like the 4 CCF rate, they're probably not going to like the 6 CCF rate any better. So if I just focus on that base rate and how many CCF I can successfully deliver at the proposed rate structure, you know, is there any value to kicking some of those CCF numbers around in the base rate?
Allison, I don't know if you can share your screen and show the different calculations that you did for the different CCF to be included in the base rate or prepaid in the base rate? But that was discussed at the advisory board as well, and they came back and recommended that we move forward with the 4. I do believe they said 4...
All right, yeah, I'll open here. So the, the way it works is if we bump from 4 up to 6, the cost of those two additional units of water then are added to the base fee. So it's two additional units of water times the cost per unit, so it's 2 times $3.23 added to the base rate. So it's the base rate of $77.30 plus an additional $6.46. So it's about $83 or so would be the base rate.
But then would there be a analogous reduction in the tiered rates in excess of the base rate? So for example, if we did 6, Tier 1 would probably go 6 to 10, and Tier 2 could be 10 plus. Would it substantially change those rates on the, on, above and beyond the base rate?
No. So Tier 1 would then be units of use, you know, 7, 8, 9 would be Tier 1, and then 9 plus would still be Tier 2. Because the tiers, the tiers were determined, the 4 units and then the 9-unit breakpoints were determined based on average statistics of the service area. So the overall statistics of how much water everyone's using in a whole year is not adjusted. It's just where we want to recover, 4 units of water or 6 units of water, the base fee or in Tier 1.
Thank you.
Appreciate you just answering the question on standby. Every water district has standby, but you do pay a fee on a monthly basis to keep that meter or the connection on your property. Whether you pay it or not, you get a bill every month, correct? All of our districts. I know Caliomi, Anderson Springs, you know, and like you said, any day you can go out there and turn the water on, because you have availability to do that. So they are being serviced. It is there. If you sell your property, that's also included in your property value when you're selling your property. Do you have water or don't you have water? So, you know, this is a real tough process. You know, my district just went through stuff, 30 years, some of the, it was for sewer district and for water, you know, as you move forward, in through, in and out. We have the 218 process, it's gone through. Yeah, I commend the community too. You know, got real close to getting to the 250 mark, that's really hard to do. It is hard to pay for everything. We're all doing that, energy, water, everything is going up. It is a challenge, but we ran the process here, and I can't see a change in the income. I don't know about the 6 from 4 to 6. I don't know what that means or if we could change that today, but went through the same process when we were talking about the rates, at least in my district. You know, some of the sewer rates that we did was 100%. Water, you know, goes up every once in a while, so it's just a challenge as we move forward. Ran the process. We got the, didn't meet the threshold, so, you know, for me, I'm prepared to move forward today in support of this, so.
I'm struggling with this one, just because I don't think we're ever going to get another community to ever get close to what we have here in protest votes, and I don't want to ignore that. I already think 50% is pretty close to impossible. It's kind of a law that makes you feel like it's there to help you, but it's, it's just really difficult to ever get there, to get that many people on board. I don't think there's a need to redo a study. I, I, I think I wouldn't mind giving more time and chance for the advisory board to continue the conversation, to look at different alterations of the numbers, to eventually maybe see that nothing, it doesn't change much, and eventually that it is what it is. I don't know. Hate saying that, too. But I don't think there's a need to re-spend more money and redo another study. I think we have the information in front of us, and giving the, the chance for the community, both in Spanish and English, to really understand what's about to happen, or maybe look at small alterations that could benefit the community in a different way, but still allow for the district to continue to stay in the black. I'm okay with giving that a little bit more time. And just because, goodness gracious, we're at like 45%, and to say, "Pack up and go home," I, I feel like that's, that's ignoring a pretty large elephant in the room. And I want to give them a chance to continue to be engaged, and then come back and say, "You know what? We couldn't find anything. This is, this is what's being offered, or here's the changes, the slight changes that we made, where the majority of the families are going to be able to benefit." I don't know. It's hard. And, and I'll bring it up again. Part of these fees, correct me if I'm wrong, is for roadwork.
No, these are water fees, only for water.
Where does your road money come from?
There is property tax that can pay for water, roads, or streetlights. And so a lot of that property tax money has been being used to keep the water afloat.
Hence the road situation. Okay.
I think Mike wanted to go up for me.
Well, to your point, if we kick the can down the road and they come back with an adjustment, would that trigger a new 218 hearing? And if that's the case, I don't want to go there. I am prepared to move forward today.
So... Mr. Guentavano.
Well, what's before your board today is the first reading of the proposed ordinance, right? So if your board determines not to proceed with that, then, then the first reading would not move forward. As far as the, the option to, I'll just characterize it as revisiting the issue or re-reviewing the, the issue with the current Prop 218 study in place, your board can certainly provide direction to that as an alternative option if the first reading of the ordinance will not move forward as a procedural matter. The only suggestion here would be whatever that direction would come in the form of, that it needs to comply with the Prop 218 requirements. In particular, it's Article 13D, Section 6B of the California Constitution, which is initially what this current study that we have in place was, was conducted in compliance with. So depending on your, if, if your board is considering this alternative option with direction of staff, that whatever the result of that may be, whether it's revisions, minor or major revisions to the, to the Prop 218 study as part of this re-review or revisiting process, at the end of it all, it will have to comply with that particular code section, which deals with, as Special District Administrator Borey already alluded to, all these requirements that is supposed to correspond under these specific terms, and there's five of them, all five requirements, that it be a property-related, service-related, corresponding to the property in which the fees, the increase would be imposed on.
So, yeah, I hear you loud and clear on the served. You know, I get it now, especially with the ratepayers. I still see fair and equitable rates. I know that's perspective. I feel we can look at that as a way to revisit with fair and equitable rates to be discussed. It's my opinion, and I'd like to move forward that way, because the community obviously doesn't feel like it's fair and equitable. And so if there's a way to re-evaluate that, I would be willing to move forward in that capacity, so that that way they can come to a term that would work, but...
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I always just like clarity from county council of what we can and can't do. I mean, we ran the process, we're in the 218 process right now. It didn't pass. The good effort, excellent, gave, excellent, almost got there, but it didn't pass. We do this process. This isn't the only district we do this for. You know, if you're going to slip on the 218 process and you don't like it, then it needs to be a state fix, where this is something that gets fixed at the state level, because it's not allowable for us to fix it here at the county level, as far as I know, unless you can tell me differently. Every question we've had on every rate increase here, we've asked those questions. Can we do something different than what the process allows us? And it's been no. I guess you can not do something which isn't good for the, for the county and the district, and eventually in long term, not good for the community overall. It's not an easy decision. Sitting up here isn't easy, but there's processes we're given, and, you know, I just need a clear answer from, from the direction we're going here. I mean, you just read by state law, this is the process to follow. Didn't pass, so we should move forward with, with it. But, you know, I, I know it's not easy to give straight answers, but pretty simple, because if three of us vote no, you know, two of us, you know, say, you know, we want to move forward, we're going in as a board on this thing. So anyway, I just, every district will come back and challenge every decision that's been made. It'll be a long fight for you guys, as you guys move forward as a board. I'm going to be leaving in January, so I won't be there. But setting precedent, that's always a conversation to be had, and the precedent's being set, is we follow the 218 process. Every board before us has, so that's where I'm at. Well, if you can answer that one way or the other, but...
Yes, so the, and I'll focus much, for the most part, on the, on the Prop 218 study, because it is possible that even under this proposed alternative option of giving direction of staff to revisit the issue, that upon revisiting it, that what may end up being presented to your board would be the same study. Because initially, when this study was initially conducted, that was for purposes of being in compliance with Article 13D of the Constitution, Section 6B. There are specific requirements that a study would need to be, would need to satisfy in order to present itself with the recommendations that's before your board. So again, what's before your board today is, is the ordinance presented for, for first reading. So that, that's the approval item for your board in order to, whether or not to proceed with the first reading. If your board decides not to proceed with the first reading, that is, that to Supervisor Simon's point, that is, that then leads us to this valid issue of what happens next. There's been some discussion of, well, giving direction of staff, but I believe it was already raised by, by your board in the course of these discussions, that, that this, this study that was conducted under Prop 218 was conducted specifically for purposes of being in compliance with, with what's needed to be presented for your board's consideration under the procedures.
And just a brief clarification, my understanding of the law is, if there's 50-plus 1% protest votes, we're not allowed to move forward. There's nothing that forces us to say yes if it's 0% or 40%, right? Like, we're only mandated in one direction once the 50% threshold has been reached. And I understand that even if we sat here and created a new tier, that's not the Prop 218 process that was followed, so it'd have to be resubmitted for everyone to be able to review those new tiers and be able to come back and do another protest and whatnot.
Vice Chair Crandall.
With that, just one last question, just a couple. One, how many translations were conducted for this specific CSA or this specific community?
We did not receive any calls to ask for a translation, so we heard from none of them.
Okay. And then how many, I guess, I don't even want, maybe in history, I don't know if that's even legitimate to ask, but how many have come this close when it comes to the 218 process?
I, that we just passed the last three at the, on September 10th, and that's my history here. I have seen communities actually achieve that at a much higher rate than when we're dealing with 500. And so I have seen communities be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I still have, I, I don't think there was a lot of calls, because they probably didn't read it. So, like, I have an issue with the 218 process at hand. That's where I'm at. Because I can't argue the other things, because it's state law.
Supervisor Green.
You know, again, I don't think rebooting is going to be helpful in any way, and I don't think not acting today is going to be helpful. But just for the sake of argument, we do a reboot, commission a new study. How much did this study cost? How long did it take to let it and get completed? What's an average 218 study cost, and what are the timelines to do the, do the math?
I think this one cost about $10,000, and then we've been doing this for over a year and a half now. Their lengthy processes, the Middletown one also took that long.
Okay, thank you.
Did it come from their budget in CSA or from the counties? It came from theirs? Okay.
No, they actually received a grant to do theirs.
Okay.
Middletown did, but not the last three that we did.
The last three came from the districts.
It came from the districts themselves. We did reach out for that same grant funding, however, it wasn't available at that point.
I'll also just say this, uh, I know there's not a lot of people left already, but it's very imperative, uh, I know, uh, going to the CSA meetings, there, a lot of it was like recovery, you know, when it comes to that, but, um, a lot of folks didn't come until after the rates went out, and I think it's just imperative that when we move forward with any of these Prop 218s, let's just get everything out, um, because, I mean, for me, there's a lot of variables that put me in a position to question, that's all. And I know the community is, feels the same way.
I'm gonna follow up on one of your questions, Vice Chair Crandall, and, and I appreciate you, um, making the point, um, and I, I know in our last census, I think it's 20 or 21% of our community, um, their first language of choice is Spanish. Um, how many protest votes did we receive that was written in Spanish?
I haven't counted, I could count right now.
But you received some?
I received a few, yeah, but I could count them now.
I'm happy to hear that. I'm, I'm actually happy that there's some that were received. Um, I, I, I do want to, uh, and obviously I think that's a different item that we need to bring back, but at what point in our percentage of our population do we have to forcefully do a better job of doing outreach to make sure, uh, that there's equity in how we're reaching out, and I think that this is a learning moment on how we can do better, uh, for next time. Has there been a meeting between, um, the CSA and, um, yourself, Vice Chair Crandall, and, uh, Special District since our last, um, opportunity on September 10th?
I don't know if they've met with them, no, I don't know.
Um, we spoke to Helen, she came in after the meeting on the 10th, and she wasn't interested in another meeting, we did meet with her yesterday about another subject.
Okay. Okay. Well, um, yes.
I just want to backstop, I do agree with your concerns, you know, Spanish-speaking people, equity, uh, those, those are subject, I'm from Fresno, where everything is, goes out bilingual, um, but that adds cost and complexity, you need certified translations, they are legal notices and what have you, so I'm very open to the broader discussion, uh, but I don't think it's germane to the action item before us today, other than noting, um, we could do better, but this is not what the item is before us today. If you want to give direction to staff, should this pass today, that, uh, any noticing regarding these rate increases go out with a certified translation, I'd certainly support that as an add-on, uh, if staff doesn't want to do it all, all by themselves, um, but we have the item before us today. Um, it was legally noticed, uh, there's nothing in Prop 218 or any other portion of state law I'm aware of that required absolutely as a baseline requirement, bilingual noticing on this, so, uh, I do appreciate very much, uh, your concerns, and Supervisor Crandall as well, but I, I can't see that as a make or break for, uh, the item before us today.
I, I, it's not much of a compromise, um, but it sounds to me like there's some waste within the, um, water use, by telling us that there's such high-end users, uh, like you were saying, leaks, maybe you, people are using it for ag reasons, when that's not what, uh, your system is meant to be used for. I do see in your budget that there's not too many fines, um, and maybe that's something we need to look at, is misuse of this infrastructure is costing the general community, uh, and those who misuse the system should potentially have to be fined for that, uh, but I'd like to see a reduction in, um, those types of activities, or leaks, or anything, and I'd like to see a proactive approach to it. What about if we add in there that we review this in the next annual year to see where we are? Uh, are we still the same level of water use, uh, things like that, just to at least keep an eye on it, rather than five years later, here we are again? Uh, I don't see a review period, uh, and maybe that can be during our budget, we just happen to do budget right now, maybe that's something that can come back, uh, a year later, so we can be up to date as to what has changed in the area, what does the water use look like, uh, do we feel that there's less leaks or less misuse, which eventually could lead to decreasing the overall cost of that system. I'm trying to find something, uh, 'cause doing nothing is not gonna help you, and it's gonna make your job that much more difficult, and it's gonna make everyone else's life that much more miserable out there, if your job becomes that much more difficult, so, um, trying to find something that can help us pay attention as a board, rather than just the district supervisor in the area, um, 'cause it's important that we ensure that, uh, we're not just giving water for people to use in ways that it's not intended to be used for.
Um, yeah, and that's something we are looking at, um, so I sent out the 127 letters to, as a courtesy, to let them know that we would be performing leak checks as a proactive measure, to make sure that there weren't a bunch of leaks. They found three very small ones, so, um, it is actual use that is happening, um, and we can do this on an annual basis easily with all of the districts, on, you know, who's using, how much water's being used in each district, um, and all of that, we can easily monitor that.
So that, that would be my suggestion, is adding it to the ordinance to review on an annual basis during budget hearings, water use.
Yeah, and I appreciate the conversation with the overuse, the folks that are using all that water, it'd be nice to know what that is. Now, obviously, if you're growing big, you know, we had some people standing, they do flowers, they do tomatoes, they do gardening, you know, I think producing food, all in favor of that, um, if you can do that to maintain, maintain your community, and, and I think the water districts have that, if I'm gonna pay a little farming fee, or something like that, at least I think Caliomi does, if you do gardening, there's a different little tier, so, every district is different, you know, but you gotta confirm that too. I think it's the illegal use that you're really, that we really gotta know, 'cause I'd like to see it at state level, and at county level, if you're using it illegally, should be able to turn your water off immediately, so everybody else doesn't suffer, but that's a hard conversation, 'cause I think we just got something from our Attorney General about making it harder to turn off water, uh, for folks. So, anyway, a different conversation, also want to make sure through this whole process, which it's never easy what we're doing, but making sure that it's a low-income community out there, and we have that on record, 'cause I think Spring Valley should be low-income for grant help, for other things like that, and to a disadvantaged community, because I know that, that's what helped a little bit in South County, when we did some of those fees, is we got the grant, but then we also had to raise the rates to get the grant, but it helped with some of those fees, so, anyway, I just want to make sure it's a, you know, disadvantaged community, and the whole community there together, so grants would be an opportunity to hopefully pay off any loans you got out there for infrastructure or something, I don't know, uh, but something like that would, 'cause is there a fee on this for a, uh, expansion fee for a loan or anything on this one too? We've looked at so many lately. Just the CIP?
Yeah, there's, um, no loans, but we do have, um, for the three bridges out there, we have gotten grants for those, and those are like $7 million apiece, so...
Yeah, that's the federal grant program.
And, and we do have funding for capacity increasing, we're working on, um, dropping a well or another water source out there as, as redundancy.
It sounds like you're doing everything you can.
We're trying.
And that's why this year, your budget is a much larger budget, 'cause you've received some grant funding in order to do some of that work, uh, and I appreciate you being able to do that, um, because we don't want to have the ratepayers have to pay for every piece of the infrastructure upgrades or maintenance that needs to be done. Um... Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah, so, um, just lastly, I, I did see, uh, Spring Valley on one of the grants we discussed today, when it came to a grant we were filling out for housing, uh, as a disadvantaged community, um, just not noting that, 'cause Supervisor Simon mentioned that, but, uh, Director or Administrator Borey, you mentioned something about a cost in the beginning, and that it would, it was like, you mentioned $70, and I, that there was like some sort of cost that would, do you know, you remember what I'm talking about?
The base rate cost?
I, I think, yeah, you were reading it off, and then you were saying that once they, with the proposal, once they pay it, there's gonna be an adjustment, or I, maybe I heard it wrong, um, is there gonna be a way to?
Um, well, the base rate includes, um, up to four consumer units is, um, already prepaid, the, the fixed meter cost is $77.30, which includes the first four, um, and then each additional from, um, five through nine is $3.23, and over nine is $4.12, so, if it's somebody that uses, this is a calculation of what, the 12?
The 13.
The 13, um, and so if somebody used 13, including the water CIP fee of $14, the bi-monthly bill would be $124. So that's, um, versus what is currently 67.15, for the same amount of water.
That's just for the first year, right?
Correct, we're talking about 24.25.
What would be gonna add in to the budget?
Not right now. So, I'm looking for, um, action.
I don't want to belabor it in, 'cause I'm just gonna motion against it, so someone else can motion it, 'cause I'm not for it at all.
It's not in further, Chair, I'm gonna move to waive the reading of the ordinance and ask the clerk to read it in title only.
Second?
Yes. And Mr. Chair, just for clarification, would there, would there be any amendments made, um, prior to the court?
For the annual budget review?
As part of this motion, water use?
Uh, if you, if you have some verbiage, I don't think it's necessary, I think we can probably, um, give consensus to staff without amending the, uh, language of the ordinance, and that'd be my suggestion. Uh, but if you want to lock in that language, I would...
I, I would prefer, um, I'm, I'm gonna say my vote hangs on making a slight change to ensure that we don't forget this community for this, 'cause this is a difficult situation here. Um, this is a five-year plan, if we don't in- insert it into the writing, then there's nothing that holds us accountable to have to bring it back, and I want to make sure that we're held accountable to it.
Uh, so, where would that go in the ordinance?
I would add it as an extra section, uh, we could make it Section 5, or move Section 4 down and turn that into Section 4, and say, "Annual review of water use will be provided at, uh, budget hearing." June budget hearing, which is the better, uh, time, uh, to have a little bit more specific information. Is that appropriate to make that?
Yes.
Type of change, where Section 4 becomes, uh, "Annual review of water use will be provided at the June, um, budget hearing," and then move Section 4 to be Section 5?
Well, it's actually under Section 1, you're looking at, uh, bullet item 4 under Section 1, uh, I, I think.
So, there is, on the, the main substance of the ordinance is under Section 1 on, on the document that's presented to your board, and there are sub-numbers below that, 1 through 4, with 4 being, uh, under the title of capital improvement fee, so for your, uh, for your board's consideration, you may add a sub-5 to that, um, uh, so that it would still be part of that main Section 1, and, um, for your board's consideration, that, that sub-5 may state that the board shall review charges under this Section 1.1.1A, 'cause that's in the heading, uh, annually during county bu- county of Lake budget hearings.
That would work for me.
I still second it with the amendment.
And, uh, I will amend my motion to allow that second.
All right.
So, uh, the motion is to waive the reading of the ordinance as amended, and direct the clerk to read it in title only. And you seconded that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries, and if we can read the title, please. I believe it's an ordinance amending Section 1.1.1A of Ordinance Number 2945, increasing the charges and fees for County Service Area Number 2, Spring Valley Lakes. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have to make a motion for the second reading.
Yeah, if we have a next available agenda date, my motion will be to advance the ordinance to the next available agenda for second reading and possible adoption.
And that would be as amended?
As amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose?
No.
Motion carries.
Do we need to spell out the date?
It was at the next possible meeting, which was October 1st.
Well, for the convenience, October 1st?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to put a set time on it?
Okay.
I'm gonna put it on.
Um, that's probably a good idea, and I would say work with, uh, Vice Chair Crandall to make sure it's in the appropriate, uh, spot of the agenda. Um, thank you, everybody, I, I know that's not the outcome you were looking for, to be honest, it's not the outcome that I was, uh, looking for either, um, thank you for being part of the discussion.